We need quiet in the council chamber, please. We call this meeting to order of the Glen Rose City Council. It's the regular meeting on Monday, May 11th, 2015 at 5:30 PM. We will begin by the invocation from the bill for action. Let us pray together. Gracious having the Father, thank you that we can ask for your help and guidance in these matters that are dear to our heart about our community, our Glen Rose that we love so dear. And we're glad, Lord, that you love Glen Rose as well. Guide these who are going to be speaking, those who will be bringing issues, those who will be deciding what's best for our community. Put your hand upon them. Thank you for the fine work that our council people have done and our mayor. Bless all of those who are newly coming into their positions. And we're so thankful, God, for your taking these prayers to your heart and that we ask for your help in Jesus' name. Amen. You'll join with me for the blessed reasons of all of us on this day. Our blessed reason is to testify that the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor to Texas by, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Moving on to the roll call. Let the record show that Council Lady Ramsey, Councilman Martin, the mayor, Councilman Bryant, and Councilman Walter are all present. Moving on to item number two, citizen and visitor comments. City council has always ceased to have citizens attend its meetings and welcomes comments during the citizen visitor comment section of the meeting. However, pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, council cannot deliberate or vote on issues not posted on the agenda. Therefore, those types of items must be posted 72 hours prior to the city council meeting. In addition, city policy requires that all items be placed on the agenda one week prior to the council meeting. If it is not posted, no deliberation between council members may occur. The mayor or presiding officer may only respond with specific factual information or recite existing policy. Citizens may also comment on agenda items after the council has debated it first. The audience members, one at a time, will then be allowed to speak. The speaker will direct his or her comments to the mayor, who is the moderator. The comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Speaker must approach the podium, state his name and address before he or she begins to speak. Negative or disparaging remarks will not be tolerated. The city rules of decorum will be followed at all times. With the exception of these designated portions of the meeting, the mayor will not be taking questions or comments from the audience. We ask that the audience please turn their cell phones off or put them on vibrate and that the council do likewise. The mayor also advises the council not to text or browse on their cell phones during the meeting. At this time, do we have any citizen visitor comments on items not on the agenda? Please post the podium and state your name and address, please.
I'm Sam Moody. I live at 202 Camelot Street and simply wanted to pass on to the council and to the citizens of the community that on May 2nd, we had a very successful celebration of the National Registry of the Downtown Historic District. I want to extend a great deal of thanks to the members of the council who supported us, to the citizens volunteers who came out to help us get ready for the celebrations, and to the Public Works Department especially. They went home on the Friday the week prior to the celebration thinking that they were on the downhill slide getting ready for the celebration and came back to work Monday and found out that they had a great deal to accomplish in one week's period of time thanks to a storm that went through. And they did an outstanding job of making sure that our downtown area looked absolutely beautiful and presentable. And they are to be commended to that. All my special thanks to CBDV for the assistance that they gave in getting a promotion out and our radio station, KOMI. We could not have done any of it had it not been for all of us working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak during the visitor citizen comments? Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item number three, recognitions. The mayor's proclamation for the Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Is there anyone here present from that organization? I thought I heard motorcycles earlier.
They're up here.
Are they? Make this proclamation, whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and nation, and whereas motorcycles are an economical means of transportation that produce fuel consumption and road wear and contribute in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas state and motorcycle organizations across this country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote the importance of motorists awareness while sharing the value of motorcycles, and whereas the city of Glen Rose enjoys a large population of motorcycle tourists throughout the year, and whereas we wish to join in this public safety campaign to ensure the safety of our friends by encouraging all citizens to be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways. Now therefore, I, Dennis Moore, Mayor of the City of Glen Rose, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 as Motorcycle Safety Month.
tired of burying our brothers and sisters, and we just want you to remember one thing: look twice, save lives; save lives, look twice. Thank you.
And put your cell phones up, please. The following items may be acted upon in one motion. A city council member may request items to be removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration. We have, for approval, the minutes of the regular city council meeting on April 13th, Is there any discussion of the minutes of the meeting? There is? Okay, then I would seek to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of the regular city meeting on April 13th, 2015. Have a motion, Councilman Jones, have a second with Councilman Martin, all those who agree. The record show that's for them in favor of approving the consent agenda for the minutes of the regular city meeting, council meeting on April 13th, 2015. Moving on to item number five, individual items for consideration. At this time, we'll hear a presentation by the intermediate school students from Mrs. Fowler's gifted and talented class regarding the animal control center.
Good evening, Mayor Moore and city council members. We are excited to be here today. My name is Emma Parrish and I'm here with my partners, Julianne, Connor, Elizabeth, Austin, Lina, Carter, and Cindy, along with our classmates and supporters in the audience. We are currently students at Glen Rose Intermediate School, but we consider ourselves bigger than that. We are future citizens of Glen Rose and we hope to serve our community respectfully. Our gate class has dedicated their time and energy this year into helping our local animal shelter. We formed a group called Hope for Paws. Our initial question is, how can we promote pet responsibility and pet adoption in our community? These questions are formed due to us finding out about the number of pets left at the shelter of our people and the large number of feral pets in our community. Our juniors of our animals left us wondering, how can we help promote pet adoption of shelter animals? Hope for Paws created and facilitated big events this past year. All proceeds of it is put directly to the Glen Rose Animal Shelter and Second Transplant and Grandparent Texas. I just wanted to say one more thing. Hope is the only thing stronger than fear, says Suzanne Collins, the undergave. So don't fear that the animals aren't going to find a home; hope that they are.
One of our most memorable events were the Trivial Pet Food Drive, the Pet Parade, the Kiss a Puppy Valentine Pictures, Valentine Craft, and the Valentine Crawford. Due to all their hard work, bringing awareness to the shelter and its needs, and the generosity of our peers, we raised nearly $650.
We also spent time visiting the shelter to collect data for our project of how we can help the shelter and promote pet adoption. Ms. Tammy and Ms. Florida who work at the shelter are awesome. They truly care for animals and their well-being. They were helpful and answered all our questions when we came to visit. Take a look at our encounters and experiences at the shelter in our documentary that we created. Now we will show the documentary.
Hope for Paws, helping our local shelters bring smiles to the faces of our shelter pets and help them find a forever home.
We just walked into the dog kennel and it's very loud. Dogs are barking and yapping.
It felt very sad because behind these doors are animals that were abused and maybe even left to die. They're very happy to have visitors play with them.
It was very calm about talking. When I took a spot, I didn't know they missed that.
It was really exciting to see all the cats. It was hard to imagine anyone leaving them, but they were very excited.
Here we are at the shelter for the second time. We were greeted by five boys, Sammy's personal cat, and the new working boy.
We just walked into the cat room. The first to walk on us was Oreo, a kitten from the shelter.
All right, few puppies in the cat room. We asked if they could come out.
Playtime had begun.
Next, we walked into the dogs' kennels.
It was loud. Dogs were begging for attention and hoping for playtime.
It's nice to visit the animals at the shelter, but you have to remember they're there for a reason. Some abused, some on the street, and some left to die.
On this visit, many of the animals had an eye hole, which is common because they're in a confined space with one another, and were one of the core engine ones.
We just got into the dog room and I have never seen so many puppies. They were everywhere begging for attention and we ended up getting puppy kisses all over our face. We got to hold them and love on them. It is kind of sad though because these animals are here for a reason and they are all really well behaved.
It's a caring community, we call it G-R-A-M. It's extra special, lucky in Glen Rose. Quite a place to be. Come visit and you'll see. It's a caring community, we call it G-R-A-S. It's extra special, lucky in Glen Rose.
Let's be a caring community in Glen Rose, helping the cats and dogs find a forever home where they will receive tender loving care for the rest of their lives. That's why we would like to suggest a name change from Glen Rose in Control to Glen Rose Animal Care.
Although our admissions support of the animals for positive steps towards helping our shelter, we know it is not enough. We look firsthand at the pet's and feline's health while we are searching. We know that changes don't happen overnight. All of you have the power to change the life of the pets at the shelter. They need us. Without us, many of the animals will go unnoticed. They will not have a chance to find a home and they have to be put down.
We want to know more. We have many ideas that we plan to implement. We have a plan to raise awareness to the shelter and its needs by involving the community, seeking volunteers, and spreading the word. This Wednesday, frozen milk or earwax is helping to sponsor dog adoption from the shelter. They are donating 25% of their proceeds from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. The community does want to help.
We would like your support and help. One of the ways that you as a city council member would help would be considering a name change for the shelter. Would you consider the name Glen Rose Animal Care Control? We believe this will help our community change their views and perceptions about the shelter, thus signify that our city cares about the animals. The name change will let outsiders know that our community does not view the shelter as a dumping ground, but a temporary place of refuge where dogs and cats receive tender
The one basic desire we all have in this world is to be loved. Let's give love and hope to those without a voice. The cats, kittens, dogs, and puppies need us. We need to have more people be aware of what we are doing at Hope for Paws. Thank you for your time and your consideration of our proposal for a name change. Together, we can make a difference.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler's class.
Good, how are you?
Good. Hey, little one.
Hello.
Hi. What you got in your mouth? Get that back.
Okay, moving on to item number, I'm gonna move item number 11 up. We're laying here, Congress, the auditors. They're probably there waiting probably up there. I'll let, I'll let you do it. Okay, moving on to item number, we're gonna move item number 11 up and the, I'll just stay out here a minute, to have our presentation for the auditors. And I'll have them come at this time.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Holland Law, but you can tell I'm from Redwood Hill, and I'm here today to discuss a draft and introduce a report to you and answer any questions that you might have about this document as well. What I want to do is just point out a few of the financial highlights to you on page 14 of the document. We find the balance sheet for the governmental funds. And as you can see on page 14, the fund balance as of September 30th, 2014, had a net fund balance of approximately $3.2 million within the general fund, and the convention and mission bureau had approximately almost $100,000 in net fund balance, as you can see there. As you can see, the activity for these funds, total revenues for the general fund of approximately $2.3 million, with the commission and mission bureau being almost $300,000. And you can see the expenditures there at the bottom, with total expenditures for both these funds being approximately $2.7 million. And we had a net change in fund balance of a decrease of $84,000 with the...
What page is that in?
Oh, 16.
Oh, that's in 14.
That's in 14. Or 16, and I didn't let you know.
Okay. I didn't see the number.
Yeah. So, page 16, you can see the total revenues that you have for the general fund, the convention and mission bureau, and you can see the total expenditures as well, and the net change in fund balance of the general fund is approximately $66,000 of a decrease. Total expenditures, as you can see here, about three quarters the amount of the fund balance of the city at the end of the year for the general fund. On page 18, you can see the balance sheet for the municipal utility fund. The net position at the end of this year is approximately $11, $10 million, and unrestricted portion of this net position was about $4.4 million. The other portion of your net position basically includes the capital assets of this fund, net of the debt that relates to it, which leaves you about $5.6 million in net investment in capital assets. Obviously, that portion of your net position is not liquid in order for you to be able to pay for operations and things like that for the city, for the municipal utility fund, but obviously those capital assets are being used in the part of operations. On page 19, for the municipal utility fund, you can see total operating revenues were about $1.4 million in total operating expenses, or a little bit more than $1 million, giving a net change in operating expenses as an increase to your net position of approximately $300,000. But obviously too, there's some other items that were non-operating expenses that the city did have within this fund, but looking down at page, you see the total change in net position was an increase of approximately $341,000 of this fund. And obviously, this portion is not cash flow for this fund. On page 20, you can see the cash flow for the municipal utility fund. And you had a net decrease in cash and cash equivalents for this fund, but a lot of that was due to purchases of capital assets of approximately $276,000. It's your major difference between your operating statement on page 19 and your cash flow statement on page 20. Or there's actually just a small decrease there for your cash flow. Flipping through the report on page 21, you find the notes in the financial statements provide you some more detailed information about the city, in particular, like on capital assets on page 28 and 29, you find a little more detailed information about those items, and as well as long-term debt on page 30 and 31. And one of the things I wanted to make sure that I pointed out to you this year is the pension note disclosure that's in the report this year is going to look substantially different in fiscal year 2015 as a result of implementing a new standard, GADBI Statement Number 16, the new pension reporting standards. And on page 35, you can see an actual evaluation that was done as of 12/31/2013, there's a portion of the, there's an unfunded portion of the pension liability of approximately a half a million dollars. And this year, 2014, 15, you will see that liability being included on the balance sheet. In years past, it has not been included in the balance sheet. It was only disclosed in the financial statements. But some of the changes in reporting until 2015. And also, some of the reports will be changed up over as well. To me, I think it'll be a little bit more user-friendly, provide more detailed information about the pension liability. If we can put through the compliance section of this report, page 42, we see our document for reporting government audit standards. One of the things I want to make sure that I point out about this section, beginning on page 42, is that in fiscal year 2013, we had a few items that were reported here, and actually, we can see it's on eight of this. It was page 45 through 48, 49, include all of the prior year items that were required to report to you. And the majority of these items have been resolved. So I'm happy to inform you that we did bring up some items that needed some attention, and those items were resolved. And we did have one other item that was brought to any attention for this current fiscal year, 2014, and you will see that on page 44. And I think a portion of this does relate to an item that we did bring up in 2013, but it's still being in the process of being resolved. That was one item that just took a little bit more time to address and take a look at. So I'm happy to inform you that, hey, we're bringing something to management's decision and those items are being looked at and being resolved. And to me, you know, as someone sitting in your seat, that's what I would want to see of management, you know, if items are brought up to their attention, they are taking a look at those and being resolved. I know last year was our first year to work with the city, and I know a lot of the situations that we had at hand last year, where of course, someone was still present this year, but we were able to get through a lot more of the information and be able to get things wrapped up a little bit quicker, so.
Any questions from council? So, looking at page six, then, in governmental activities, we have 3.7 million in assets. Business activities, we have 5.3 million in assets. So we have a total of 9 million in assets. Unrestricted is 7,753,480, that representation.
Let's see, the unrestricted portion of that position was about $7.7 million.
And so about 1.3 is restricted, what I subtracted then from the second. Questions from council? Yes, Councilwoman.
Once the council has approved its final draft, will we receive, each council member receive a copy of the actual audit and not just this?
Yes, that's correct. And we do still have one item to resolve, right on seven.
Anyone in the audience like to come and comment on this item this time? Need to come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name's Debbie Harper and I live at 1508 Camelot, 2018.
My name's Debbie Harper, and I live at 1508 Camarote, 2018. I'm just curious, is the item that's not been resolved yet have to do with the land of the dinosaurs, $80,000? Is that included in this audit report?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
Or, that's a question for you. Yes, it does relate to that particular item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have a question or comment on item number 11? Okay. Coming back to council, is there a, we need a motion then to approve the draft of this, is that correct, Tom?
Yes.
Is there a motion, if you're trying to approve the draft?
I just have a question.
Oh, you got a statement.
A certain statement. If the one issue that's not been resolved, my understanding is it is not included in this budget, or is it in this budget?
Okay, probably not in the budget, but I don't know if it has anything related to the budget, because I don't know that it's necessarily a cash flow item, if more, I'm assuming it...
Yes, that's, that's what I wanted to make a statement, that it does not have to do with the city's asset budget, it's actually another issue altogether.
Just for a financial reporting...
I like that part to be brought out, that it's just something that needs to be...
Rectified, yeah. That's right.
I make a motion that we approve the financial draft budget as presented.
I have a motion, Councilwoman Ramsey, to approve the auditor's draft of the audit. Have a second, Councilwoman Bryant, those in favor? Any opposed, I'll break it, so that's four zero, approving the draft. Moving back up to item number three, discussion, an action for approval of an ordinance adopted a fee schedule for the code enforcement office, and I'll defer to Ray.
Get out of the way from this, please. I've, I've given you all, in addition to what you had in your packets, I, I provided you all with the copies of the slide presentation that we're gonna look at tonight. Currently, the permits and fees for the code enforcement office are grossly outdated, as many of you know. The majority of the costs that are being absorbed by the general fund when people do perform construction activities and everything else, because our permits aren't up high enough to equalize that, so we have to pull from the general fund. And what that amounts to is that the taxpayer isn't paying for the construction. This fee schedule was designed to reduce some permits, where the costs were grossly high for citizens who tried to get permits for small items in their yards, like sheds and things like that. And it was also, we, we looked at this to make a gradual increase to prevent what I'm calling sticker shock to people all of a sudden that are paying $25 for permits, instead of jumping them up to 200 for trying to get a balance in there. So, the city is still gonna have to eat some of it a little bit, but we don't want to just cause a major shock in permits that people won't show up to even get a permit and try to do it without it, and we don't want that to happen, because that's gonna be a safety issue, and certainly we want to avoid that. Going, I, I present, on this fee schedule, you see the slides in front of you, what I've done is pulled some examples to give you an example of what's going on there. Current fee is for a, an electrical permit for a, we used an ongoing project, 407 North East Bernard Street, remodel of the basement, it's a commercial building. The current fee we're charging is $35.95. It cost the city through inspections, because we have contracted an inspector, as you well know, $150, which means we end up losing $114.05. What we're proposing is a $123.25 increase on this type of permit, and we will lose 87.30 versus 114.05. And this is an example of what I'm talking about, if we went, jumped it all the way up, it's already 35.95, so the new permit would cost 123.25. So, we're trying to get, bring them up gradual, so we won't have, like I said, that sticker shock. If the person has one reinspection, I've thrown that on there just for your information, the cost then changes again, because that's a, that's a, if they are inspectors, $75 per inspection.
Yes, sir.
Are you setting a timeline to gradually increase to that?
Yeah, what we do is come back to 12 months and increase it again. And what we, what we're trying to do is get it as close to balance as we can. Next slide, we're looking at a building permit for a single-family home of 1,355 square feet, two-story, and it costs the home $175,000. Current fee is 375.20, that's what it costs the city, and the current gain is 20 cents. What we do is move this up to 437.50, leaving us 62.50 to the good side. But most of these homes have more than one reinspection, so even one reinspection is bringing us down again. But if, if they go through without a reinspection, which is very unlikely, we stand to make a, I don't say to make money, because we're not making private, but to offset the, the balance sheet, so to speak. Looking at another place, at 1804 F Southwest Bernard, this is a single-family home, 1,665 square feet, $215,000 home. And I don't go through each one, but you can set up a similar way, but we'd end up with, because of the size and the cost of the house, figure the square feet cost. Next slide, taking a look at an electrical permit for a new service. Again, right now, this is a project that's already been done recently, the last couple of months, we charged them $23, and it cost the city $150 in inspections. So, what we're doing is proposing a premium fee up to $80 from 23. We're still gonna lose some money there, but here again, this is that gradual moving up. The next example is an example of an accessory building. A citizen comes in and wants to put, has to get a permit to put an accessory building in his house, excuse me, his rear yard. The biggest reason he has to do that is because we're concerned about the setbacks, how far away he's from his primary residence, he has to be so far from the side property line and so far from the back property line. Right now, for a 10 by 20, that's a two-foot square foot shed, a citizen would have to pay $75. We think that's a little lopsided, and it's because the original scheduling fees for these type of things, permit fees, were set up based on square footage. So, what we've done is for things like this now, somebody comes in, we'll do, we do two inspections, it doesn't require the building inspector to do it, and so it's gonna be reduced $50, so it would cost the citizen only $25 for this permit. And that's what I was talking about earlier, about them being lopsided. The next one, what I've done is, this is depicting a, a construction of a new home, a 2,000-square-foot home, is an example depicting all the permits and inspections needed, and current fee totals 637.20, and that includes all the permits that are necessary. And our current loss on that is 337.80. And with our new proposal, if the fee increases for all these permits for a single-family home, it would now, we'd only have a loss of $45, but an increase up to 1,020 in this particular time frame. I've also got some, a couple more slides here that show about some fees that we previously didn't charge, or ones that we could increase. Highlight some of the, right now, on new developments, all the engineering fees for those developments, that when our EHT comes in and reviews everything and checks everything out, the city is absorbing all that cost. I get together with Chris, who has a lot more experience in this than I do, and as far as what cities are charging for these type of things, and he went through and looked at a bunch of other cities, and then took our smaller city into consideration, and he came up with this proposed schedule for these engineering fees. That will be something that we've never done before. Some, some developments in the past, they've gone through with one engineering review, it's no problem, we've just had a couple of things to tweak, where we've had one in the past that had to have like two or three major revisions, and so we were eating each that fee every time it comes up. So, what we're gonna do now is pass that cost on to the developer. Does anybody have any questions about the fee schedule?
Yeah, my, my thoughts on Ray is, is there any way we can just do this while we're, we're breaking even and not, and it's not a moneymaker? Because I, I hate to see it turn into a moneymaking deal, I, if, because it, maybe it hurts construction a little bit or something, you know, if, if we just keep it where, what our actual cost is, while we're not losing money and expecting the other taxpayers to, to pay for inspections that they're not getting?
Well, we can actually, I guess, do that, but what would happen is that we wouldn't be able to figure that out till the house was built, because if someone needs a reinspection, we usually give them one free reinspection. So, we're always eating that $75, because we give them one free reinspection. If they don't get the work done correctly again, then we go into talking about charging them again. You wouldn't be able to figure out that final cost until the end of the construction. I mean, I guess we could go as far as, if, if the council desires, we could sit there and charge them the fee, and if they didn't reach that amount, we could refund them, that would be probably the easiest way to do it, versus calculating it as we go along, and at the end, then trying to get the money from the developer.
But if, if you get a reinspection, there's an electrical problem. Okay, this page, is it the electrical contractor, or the, or the general contractor, or this page?
In the past, when we have reinspection, we've contacted the general contractor, I'm not sure who's paying that. Normally, the general contractor will come in and pay the fee, and I don't know if he goes back out to the electrician and gets all the exhausts, that cost himself, I, I'm not sure, but he's the one that's contacted, and he usually pays it. Sometimes he'll contact the electrical, an electrical contractor, an electrical contractor will come and do it, but for most of the time, it's the general contractor will come in and pay for that. We don't have too many, since I've been here, I think we've had like a, just a handful of people that went into that second reinspection, you know, so that's a very rare, really happens, usually it's a first reinspection, which we can sort the cost on that.
Hey, Councilwoman Bryant, have a question.
What was the, what's an example of a city possibly gaining a financial, a financial weight off of a, of a fee? Because I thought the examples showed a break-even top increase.
There are, there are some of them that show a little bit more, but they're offsetting other things within the fee schedule. In order, you know, I don't think that, the way we've sat and worked all these different combinations of things, this is not gonna be a moneymaker for the city. Okay, we're not looking at it to pay somebody salary like this, you know, or increase any revenue. This is, we, we try to do the best to break even, so that the taxpayers who are contributing to our general fund end up, you know, paying for their neighbor's house, what we're trying to avoid.
I would like to suggest on, on the ones that we, you are withholding, the slow increases, to go ahead and maximize that, just go ahead and get it to the break-even point, instead of revisiting this in 12 more months. I mean, it looks to me like that's more of a, here we go again, type of increasing again, to our open up goes, to go ahead and get it to the break-even. On those, on those particular lot items, go ahead and get it to the break-even point, instead of being in the red.
Well, and that would be entirely up to you. I, I've talked to a couple of councilmen, tried to get some feeling from some of the councilpeople, and there was afraid there was gonna be a sticker shock, which would prevent people from coming in to get any permits then. And that's what we were trying to avoid, but we certainly can do that right off the bat.
Well, I, I agree, but also agree with what Johnny said too, about not hitting the extras, the extra items with an increase in, you know, for more than worth costs and possibly reimbursed at the end, I'd like to see that done as well.
Yes, Councilwoman Jones, I should counter to Chris on that, as far as, you know, instead of taking loss, I'm not afraid of a sticker shock. I mean, I get sticker shock when I buy a new car, because I have a lot of car repairs or something like that, so, you know, building a house, the only shock is probably somebody like, I'm not sure if you know, who may be buying these things on a regular basis, but I would rather see it up to at least break even. So, we don't have to revisit it again in 12 months, and maybe it'll hold good for a couple, three years, since we're filing an ordinance, as opposed to just revision of the fee schedule.
I certainly do that, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ramsey.
Well, I agree that, that we need to bring it up to the break-even point, rather than revisit it another council or a council review in 12 months and ease it up, because we've just said that in 12 months, we're probably gonna raise it again, so we'll just need to go ahead and resolve it now and let it be. I do like the fact that we do have the new fees, because I was reviewing some, because those are some important ones that are up there.
Any questions from council?
I just want to go to rest of council agrees about anything that being over the dollar amount that would be going to the city, that we somehow get that reimbursed back to the...
Good question.
We could allow them to reply for, apply for that rebate, maybe a couple of dollars, it may not be tied to all of it.
Right.
It would put a little bit of the illness onto the builder, the contractor, property owner, you know, to be involved in, yes, and, you know, why did that rebate?
Councilwoman Ramsey.
I agree with our city administrator that it needs to be the responsibility of the contractor or builder to, if they feel that they're under this, to apply for it, because that's another burden putting on our code enforcement, our city secretary, and whoever else is involved, that they've gotta keep up with it. So, the builder, if they feel like, you know, they're a hundred dollars under, and they want their a hundred dollars back, there's a form, they request it, submit the receipts, and go from there.
Any other comments from council at this time? I would go to the audience at this time on item number three, about an ordinance adopted a fee schedule for a code enforcement office. Anyone in the audience like to come up and make a comment? May I, may I need to come to the podium, state your name and address?
My name's AJ Martin, I live at 1745 County Road 302. I had a question about his presentation, the electrical permit change. It went from 23 to, it was one for next week, 80. Living outside of the city, it's difficult to get any type of service for internet or anything like that, or, I just wanted to know if the new fee was comparable to like Grand Mary or Stevensville, and if it was gonna become even more difficult for, to get new service?
I think that's just what you charged in, put their antenna, is that what this is?
We're talking about the...
Not here.
The Netlink, antenna? Yeah, they, they entered in, as you, as a councilor members, a month or two ago, the council entered into an agreement with a contract with Netlink to use our stand pipes, our towers, to put an antenna on there, and that was the cost for the electrical permit. That was it.
So, it's not...
It would affect you?
No, it's a one-time thing for, make sure they hooked up the electricity correctly.
You're welcome. Anyone else have that coming? Yes, true. Come to the podium, please, state your name and address.
My name's Anthony, we're in Olive, 215 Camelot, I'm a local home builder and now a developer. And I was gonna ask the city council if they had considered getting a full-time inspector, as opposed to paying all the different fees to each side, if you have to come out for inspection or reinspection, if that would make, because I know there's a lot more activity that has been in the past several years, I didn't know if it'd be worth it or not, but just...
That's not really something on the agenda, but something certainly could be.
Well, it could make a big difference, if you get a lot of activity, then you could actually justify something. I don't know what the break-even point is. We certainly vary it to keep our cost up.
Yeah. So, we, we can get together with, I get together with Ryan, and we could determine, really looking at the number, the number of permits being applied forward, especially the, the one that requires the building contractor, or the building inspector to come in. We can see where we are with it, bring that back to the council at the next meeting.
Inspection might get real high if we hire somebody.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, I'm afraid of, but, you know, I'm not sure if we have enough activity, but that's something we don't have to add up all the numbers, so we can bring that to you, and it might show just that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Anyone in the audience, else in the audience like to come and comment on item number three, discussion, action on the approval of an ordinance adopted a fee schedule? I would assume then we'd need to possibly postpone this to next month to get the numbers. I don't know, I'd like to see the numbers myself, the whole different numbers before we approve them.
This is something that... Is this something that, I feel like the code enforcement office has shown their responsibility on this. Is this something that the city administrator can take on without, I mean, as far as the money coming in? The money comes in through the office?
I think it'd be very necessary for me to at least spend some time talking with the code enforcement staff, you know, to make sure that all of the different areas are covered. I don't think it's going to take that much time because they've got the background and foundation laid. But I think it would be something I would absolutely need to speak with them about included.
Mr. Moody?
Yes, ma'am.
My understanding is that your office doesn't handle any of the money. It comes straight into the central office, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then I assume we would just postpone item number three till?
The next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting on June eighth. Okay. It'll be no actual item of the group postponed to the June eighth meeting, I believe that's June eighth. Okay, moving on to item number four, consider approval of Camelot Phase Three subdivision. And I'll defer to Stephanie.
Okay, this is Camelot Phase Three. It's being proposed by Mr. Rafino, who of course is here. We are, he has applied to have construction of single-family residences, all meeting the criteria of the R-one zoning district. The new phase would be just north-north-east of the city and directly off of Route Two, up on the hill. There'll be about twenty-five new homes. All of his plans were reviewed by EHT and approved through them for all necessarily, drainage runoff, everything that is included with the subdivision. The PMZ has approved, or has recommended approval from the city council on this particular property. And Mr. Rafino is here also to answer any questions that we may have.
Thank you. Questions of council at this time, from council? All right, we'll have to go up to the audience at this time. If there are anyone in the audience that'd like to come and comment on considering the approval of Camelot Phase Three subdivision? Coming back to council, I would be looking for a motion on a Camelot Phase Three subdivision.
I'd like a motion that we do approve the Camelot Phase Three.
I have a motion from Councilman Bryant to approve Camelot Phase Three subdivision. I have a second from Councilman Ramsey. All those in favor? Any opposed, let the record show that's four in favor of approving Camelot Phase Three subdivision? Moving on to item number five, consider approval of Camelot Phase Three annexation. And I'll defer to Stephanie again.
Okay, obviously Camelot Phase Three. Now that we've approved for that to be added, Mr. Rafino has applied to have that annexed into the city as well. There's not really a lot to go over other than that, but of course, again, Mr. Rafino is here for any questions.
Questions of the council at this time? I would go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to come and comment on the considering approval of Camelot Phase Three annexation? Okay, coming back to the council, I would be looking to see if there's a motion on item number five of the Camelot Phase Three annexation. Have a motion? Have a motion from Councilman Jones on the annexation of the Camelot Phase Three annexation, Camelot Phase Three. I have a second from Councilman Bryant. All those in favor? Any opposed, let the record show that's four in favor of Camelot Phase Three annexation. Moving on to item number six, consider appointment of new members to the preservation board. At this time, there are five applying to the preservation board. Eva Jo Hawkins for reappointment, Betty Gawston for reappointment, Joyce Selby for a new appointment, Celeste Schmidt for a new appointment, and Larry Garnett for a new appointment. And I believe all their applications are contained. And one will be replacing Sam, will be resigning on May eighth at their regular shift. Are there any questions of council at this time, from council?
I just want to make a statement that is refreshing to see that all the applications are complete and included in the packet.
Well, we've come a long way from the days when we didn't even have applications.
No, I understand.
When people were appointed like me and stayed on the board for six years without reappointments. So we've come a long way.
Are you ready for a motion?
I have to go to the audience. At this time, any other comment from council? At this time, I'll go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on consideration of appointment of new members to the preservation board? Coming back to the council, is there a motion to approve the new members to the preservation board, which are Eva Jo Hawkins, Betty Gawston, Joyce Selby, Celeste Schmidt, and Larry Garnett? I have a motion from Councilman Jones to approve Eva Jo Hawkins, Betty Gawston, Joyce Selby, Celeste Schmidt, and Larry Garnett to the preservation board. I have a second from Councilman Ramsey. All those in favor? Any opposed, let the record show that's four in favor of approving Eva Jo Hawkins, Betty Gawston, Joyce Selby, Celeste Schmidt, and Larry Garnett as members of the preservation board. Moving on to item number seven, consider appointment of a chairman to the Board of Adjustments. And Ray had made a phone call, and we were asking you to consider Jennifer Miller to be the chairman of the Board of Adjustments since we found out in the city ordinance, it says the council must approve the chairman to the board.
Just to add to that, in the past, what we've done is that we've handled the Board of Adjustments the same like any other board. When at their first meeting, the members themselves elected a chairperson. However, our ordinance requires the council to appoint the chairperson there. And it's the only board that has that provision in the ordinance. I provided a copy of the ordinance where you showed that, so that's why it's coming before you tonight.
Jennifer, was the chairperson board anybody on the board?
No, the board has no say in it. The council has the say.
It stood at your's pleasure.
But was she acting the chairperson down?
No, we haven't. It was Ernie, and he's no longer on the board, and they haven't had a meeting yet. Like they already this month, and so we need to have a chairperson. Jennifer Miller is, of course, has the most experience on that board. And I would recommend that the council consider that.
Discussion.
Maybe we'll build, or we invite motion, or whatever.
I just want discussion, nail it.
Tell Miss Miller indication like the job?
Yes, she indicated that she would take the position of sole proprietor.
Please.
Disagreement?
Well, I've got a, yeah, you can make limitations. It's at your's pleasure. It's at the council's pleasure. Right now, it's really discussions. I'll let you go to the audience. If there are, before we come back for a count of motion or nomination. Yes, sir. Mr. Bryant?
On the point of date, you said Jennifer Miller has the most experience, but Berlin Moore, I'm looking at her. So she was appointed two thousand thirteen, is that correct?
Jennifer was on the board prior to that.
Oh.
So I'm talking about years of experience. They wouldn't indicate, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, Councilman Ramsey, do you have a comment?
I'll go to Berlin Moore, she just declined chairmanship.
Any other discussion from council, comment? All right, I'll go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on the appointment of a chairman to the Board of Adjustments? Comment about it. Okay, coming back to council then, I'd be looking to entertain a motion on appointing someone as the chairman to the Board of Adjustments. Okay, Councilman Jones?
Motion we elevate Jennifer Miller to be chair.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Jones to appoint Jennifer Miller as the chairman of the Board of Adjustments. Is there a second, I'm at?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilman Bryant. Those in favor reporting Jennifer Miller as the chairman of the Board of Adjustments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Let the record show that's four in favor of approving Jennifer Miller as the chairman of the Board of Adjustments. Moving on to item number eight, consider appointment of an alternate Board of Adjustments member. And I'll defer to Ray.
At the March ninth meeting this year, Mr. Lewis, Carmen Lewis, had an application to the board, but the application was incomplete. The council turned back the application because it was not complete. And so since that time, it's completed and the application's before you again. This is an alternate member to the BOA, a non-loyal member unless one of the members is not there. And the reason it is critical, if I can indulge the council for a minute, the reason it's so critical to have an alternate person on the BOA is that the BOA requires four people in a quorum, a five-person board, to make a decision if it involves the question of whether or not one of our public officials here in the city made a determination on an issue that the board would handle. It takes four of the five to override that decision. So it's not like a normal board that three people would suffice as a quorum, and they need four to override.
It's a super majority.
Correct.
So if somebody's absent, you need an alternate.
That's what, yes. So alternates pretty important on this board.
Does he have to be assigned to the board, or can he just step up with his hands?
I like to have our alternates show up for meetings. And they can, they'll show up, and if we have all five, they can leave. If not, come on through right that way.
Some discussion from council about appointing an alternate to the Board of Adjustments.
Just checking, is Mr. Lewis here?
It's Mrs.
Oh, Mrs.
It's Mrs. Carmen. I gotta go to the audience. Any other discussion from council? I'll kind of go to the audience at this time. Is there anyone in the audience that has any comment on the appointment of an alternate to the Board of Adjustments? Okay, coming back to council, is there a motion to be entertained on item number eight on the appointment of an alternate to the Board of Adjustments?
I have a motion that three point Carmen Lewis as the alternate to the Board of Adjustments.
I have a motion from Councilman Bryant to appoint Carmen P. Lewis as the alternate to the Board of Adjustments. I have a second from Councilman Mark to approve Carmen Lewis as an alternate to the Board of Adjustments. All those in favor? Any opposed? Let the record show that is four zero in favor of approving Carmen P. Lewis as alternate to the Board of Adjustments. Moving on to item number nine, update and progress of EHT's subdivision appointments. I'll defer to Kyle. Motion, if you have a comment?
Yes, I have the agenda.
Yes, ma'am, you did.
I'd like to read my statement regarding this item. Because I requested it be put on the agenda because I felt some very important things with the growth is coming to Glen Rose and then the ETJs. In December, I carefully mentioned about where these subdivision ordinances stood, if they've been looked at. In March meeting, when the city administrator was giving the public works report in absence of the public works manager, I asked if any progress was made on reviewing and suggestions for revision. The city administrator replied that he had not had time to work on them. I asked if it would be possible to have them for the April meeting with notations and recommendations. It was not on the April agenda, so I asked the reasons why. And if the code enforcement officer, the public works manager, had reviewed these ordinance that have been involved in any way, the city administrator responded that the code enforcement officer was involved in the process. Since I had not heard anything, I filled out an agenda request. And based on the city administrator's cover sheet that was given, that stated that it was given to Ken West, and it was given to our past city administrator on June sixth, twenty thirteen. Ken West resigned the next month. So the information was then given to our present city administrator. And I could not find the exact date, but my understanding of my notes was at the end of December or beginning of January, right after he came. And knowing that he had to get the lay of the land and so forth before, that was something for him to deal with. The statement within his cover sheet that he didn't realize it was an issue, and the recommendation to turn it to a planning and zoning commission, which is a volunteer commission, not members who have knowledge of pay, like the paid staff, that work with these issues on a continual basis. It does not follow the letter that was made by recommendation of EHT, which states, made to Ken, and it stated that we have attached two copies of the draft subdivision ordinance for the city's review. After you and your staff have had a chance to review it, let's meet and discuss any revisions or comments you and your staff may have. It says staff. And my personal feeling is, and I'm asking these questions in general, to me, the question is only a paid staff, an experienced person that works with this day to day, which would include the zoning administrator, which is you, to answer these questions. And one is the responsibility of all personnel that are involved in subdivision ordinances. And the example of those, the zoning administrator, which again is you, the code enforcement officer, the fire marshal, the public works manager, as well as engineers and the city attorney for the legal standpoint. I don't see where planning and zoning can answer those questions. And whether we have checked the proposed subdivision ordinances against the city's comprehension plan, how do they match up? I'm not sure the PMZ could begin to even answer those. They are volunteers. And how many of these new ordinances, I've just flipped through and read and highlighted several conflict with our present ones. And I just feel very strongly that this is not something for volunteer proof to have to go through our ordinances or the comprehensive plan to make these recommendations. And going through here, I don't see any notes or highlights or comments for these that have been looked at by the staff or the fire marshal.
We have not gotten together on these. In fact, that was part of, and let me back up to my recommendation for the planning and zoning commission. This is one of the most important ordinances that the city has because it is the development of the future. In the other cities where we have gone through and redone the subdivision ordinance while I was there, we've always used planning and zoning. And maybe it was a different group of people. And I'm a part of, particularly remember a couple of attorneys that were part of the planning and zoning commission. And they spent quite a few months going through every word, every phrase, the entire subdivision ordinance to make sure it was something that they could recommend to the council. And it gives, you know, basically another set of eyes with the ownership of the community, which is the planning and zoning commission. They have a view of the community, that they have some ownership in the future of the community because they are on planning and zoning. If that's not what the council wants to do, and they want to run it just directly through our office, I would be pleased to do it that way.
My feeling is, is that before they're given to us as a planning and zoning, the reason that I feel they're important is EHT went to the time to do it, and it suggests staff, the code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officer, his responsibility is to carry out the ordinance in the city, so he is, he is responsible. The fire marshal has to be involved with the builder or the contractor in, in all of those areas. The public works manager knows about the streets, the curving, the guttering, whether we have ditches or not, and, and the ordinance is in here, is in conflict with our ordinance regarding that. I just don't think that you can just throw something to the P and Z without some type of markings, recommendations from the staff who understands how that's dealt with. And we don't, we have enough trouble in Glen Rose. We're Glen Rose, Texas. We're not Shattuck Park or any other area. And we have enough trouble getting people to volunteer. And on the planning and, the P and Z board right now, the only person that would have knowledge of this is Anthony Ruffino. And Anthony Ruffino is very busy building houses. And for him to take the hours that I know that it takes to compare all of this, he's not being paid for that. He's giving his services, and when they make their decision, the P and Z makes their decision, they're making it based on the recommendations, the information that is given them by either you as the zoning administrator or the code enforcement office.
If you would like, like us to do it in-house first, we will do that without any question. Do you want, at that point, to let the planning and zoning see it before it comes to the council? Or do you see a reason for planning and zoning to be involved at all at this point?
My personal opinion is, I don't see any, because of the fact that they are volunteers, I don't see any reason for them to be really involved actively, to be all doing all of this. Unless the code enforcement and yourself being the head of the P and Z feel like they need to have input. But it needs to come from people with experience and knowledge and expertise first. Now, the rest, I'm just speaking for me. I'm not speaking for the rest of the council, please.
How much from other councils? Councilman Bryant?
No, I do, I do agree with the Councilman, because I've read this, I'd assumed that we already finalized the work, getting through it, and now we're going to give it to P and Z to, to look at, be familiar with it more or less. But yeah, I agree, that's a, we have such a hard time getting volunteers here, and I, I hate to just overload them with abundance of work that would ultimately just have to come back to us for changes and approvals anyway. So I would like to see the, let's see, take control of this and finalize it, and then hand it over to the P and Z for, for you.
Councilman Mark?
Yeah, I don't believe it's P and Z's responsibility to come up with orders, and I believe it's, it's responsibility to make sure all the decisions are based on the existing ordinance.
Councilman Jones?
Sure, I think there are people on P and Z, such as Mr. Ruffino, that might be able to pick out something that's politically wrong or erroneous in the formation. And give them an opportunity to at least review it at their leisure, you know, say, hey, we've got this document ready, go ahead and sign off on it, or look over it, and ask your, ask your convenience. It doesn't have to be a formal P and Z board, you have somebody that has a clue, doesn't have to worry about it, and they don't agree.
I'm sure EHT would be helping us also to clear the draft.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree that Ray, Jim, yourself, the attorney, all be involved with EHT. Any other comments? I suppose that discussion, I don't believe.
It will be moved to the commonly called front burner. We'll do that.
Thank you.
We, we hope to have this ready for approval by the June 8th, possibly the June 8th.
Is that a feasibility for June 8th, or is?
I'm just, I'm just asking.
I'm not sure that this, we'll set that as a goal, but depending on if we can get everybody together and nothing, nothing happens, you know, that would take our attention away from it. And we will shoot for that.
Any other comments from council? Okay, moving on to item number 10, consider approval of 4Bs. Leonard's economic development provision grant to frozen yogurt your way. And I assume that Mrs. Andrew Frank. The owners are not here tonight. May the audience, frozen yogurt.
Kathy.
Kathy. Fogle, thank you. Kathy Fogle here, thanks. It says, 4B approved a one-year, $200 per month grant to frozen yogurt, what, your way, to assist with hiring an employee. This now, is now being presented to council for approval. Yes, sir.
Got a question. Is there going to be some kind of contract or something in place before it comes down?
You talking about the clawback procedure?
Yes, sir.
There needs, a couple things in this request that I made, Councilman Mark. You know, I've gone through the proposal submitted to 4B on this item, and I, I had a hard time, first of all, trying to determine what they wanted from the 4B. To me, it looked like they just wanted $200. I'm not sure we can incentivize them, that's kind of the whole thought of your 4B economic money is to, to incentivizing economic development and not just giving money away. And so part of what you're talking about there, performance agreement, a lot of times we go directly, so they, they're going to add X number of employees, or they're going to create some infrastructure, they're going to go put a new yogurt machine in that's going to generate potential X amount of dollars of additional revenues south of sales tax rate of the city. So I mean, that's in this proposal here, and I'm sure the council would like to instruct 4B to clarify some things, but I don't know. Of course, I wouldn't be in 4B meeting either, so I don't know what was submitted in addition to that. And Councilman Mark was there.
I was there, and they, they did discuss it.
Councilman Ramsey was there.
Hiring part-time person. That was the basic reason that I got out of it.
I asked him, see, out of the papers I was submitting to the 4B though.
And the 4B did talk to them about it, and they did, that I recall, they asked questions.
My, my recommendation is, if the council chooses to, to adopt that, then it will present a resolution, a performance agreement, at the next council meeting, for the council to adopt. Councilman Hall. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Ramsey?
I was at the 4B meeting. I gave a little encouragement pep talk about the bylaws and what, what needs to happen. And in the, the types of projects and the guidelines, it says that economic development may require performance criterias. And my suggestion was that those, those criterias, that agreement be drawn up when this is presented to the council. However, because they were not aware of that, the business owner had not been made aware of that.
You talking about a business plan?
No, the criteria, the agreement of what the expectations and performance level is that they do when we give money. When I was on the 4B, there was always some type of agreement that they would be hiring this employee.
The clawback procedure, yes.
Pardon me?
The clawback procedure.
Right.
But you care very well of the clawback procedure until you approve it, right? Because we're going to have to pay you to do a clawback procedure, and then we.
I understand, but what I, that's not my recommendation. I'm just saying that the 4B board was not under the understanding of all of this. And they are having a workshop tomorrow to go over the bylaws, look at the different agreements and so forth.
I think at the meeting, the workshop we painted a thousand dollars for, Mr. Moore discussed clawback procedures.
Okay.
To the, to the board.
The president of the 4B board, Mr. Villa, had already had on the agenda that they needed, the 4B board needed to get together, make some goals and recommendations and plans that is suggested in their bylaws and in this agreement, to review the agreements. And so, kind of guessing contrary a little bit to what our attorney is saying, my recommendation is that we pass the recommendation from the 4B with the stipulation that a copy of the funding agreement will be given to the council at the next meeting. Because it's not the business owner's fault that are, and we need to, they need to look, the 4B needs to look at the guidelines and change that may to or shall if we're going to be requiring that agreement to have. Because as Johnny's pointed out through the years that I've known him, may means they can, shall means they have to. So we, they do need to have that performance agreement of their criteria.
Councilman Bryant?
And you're, and you're talking about stipulating that it will be for employee.
Or for the machine or whatever it was used. And my understanding was to hire in part-time employees because they teach and they need, they're needing, summer's coming and their business is picking up. And that was my understanding that I picked up from the meeting.
It was verbalized, but I didn't find it in any written documentation.
Other comments from council?
I have a question.
I know the 4B has the stipulation that the requestor has to be there, that, that doesn't apply to the council, does it?
I, I know the, the other one we did, no money's going to be given out, there's an agreement by the lawyer, signed by the mayor, future mayor. So there's a clawback procedure, I think we learned that lesson the hard way.
Yes, we have.
Are you saying clawback, drawback?
Yeah, there won't be, I mean, until, until the lawyer draws up a clawback, there's no money's given out, period. Other questions, comments from council? I'll go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on item number 10? Consider approval of 4B grant to the frozen yogurt your way. Anyone? Okay, coming back to council, is there a motion to be made on item number 10?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the 4B GRE DC for the $200 per month with the stipulation that the council will be given a copy of the funding agreement at the time that it's drawn up.
Okay, a motion from Council Ramsey on the floor. I have a second from Councilman Bryant. Those in favor? Any opposed? Let the record show that's four in favor of approval of the 4B grant to frozen yogurt your way in amount of $200 per month to assist with hiring an employee with a clawback procedure being provided by the lawyer. All right, moving on to item number 12, discussion and direction from the council concerning a memorial tree policy program. I'll defer to Kyle, I did it, I'll defer to Mike.
I've been speaking with Councilman Jones about this for a while, and it's, I don't see it as simple as just proving that, you know, we can put trees in here, and what I'm asking for the, the council is really quite a bit of direction, because in looking at the other cities that I've spoken with, what they do, you really need to have control over your property. And you need to determine what type of trees, you need to determine where the trees will go, you need to determine who's responsible for it if the tree dies within the guarantee period. Where can you get the trees from? There's, there's a whole list, in fact, I gave you a list of the questions that, that I would like some, really some assistance with from a policy standpoint. One of the thing, one of the other cities that I got their information after I've received all these and sent it out to the council, one of the initial points in one of the other cities, was someone who has a criminal record can't have a memorial tree, you know, put up for that person. And I hadn't thought of that. And so there's a lot of issues that just small things that you really wanted all to move out so you can get it, you know, operating in the beginning. Now, I also did speak to the county, because the county has tentatively approved a memorial tree program, so I spoke with the county judge. And the county judge, they haven't worked out the details on it yet, so he was asking that if we do that with the city and get a program worked out, that they would be very interested in having something similar presented to them, or we send our program to them to really coordinate, you know, either one of the two parks, or either one of the two agencies, in using something similar.
I noticed in Heritage Park, they had done a nice plaque, there's a tree that died, they jumped it down, so I don't know what happened in Heritage.
Which raises the question, is, you know, just who, who, who selects locations, who selects the trees? If there's, there are parts of it, you know, if, if we had a, a written policy, we shouldn't take much to do. You know, it's just, there are some choices there that are policy-level decisions, and that's why I'm asking for the council. And if they make those, have me with those, then we can get this done very quickly.
Birdie for, okay. Council Ramsey?
Along with this, the city does not even have a memorial policy. I know that we did a memorial to Oakdale Music for Dennis Ramsey. I have been asked to talk with the city about a memorial for someone who recently died that loved animals, to be able to establish a memorial fund to give to the animal shelter. We really need to, before we even think about trees, we need to establish a memorial policy procedure. And with, under that, put whether it's trees or to a department. I mean, we're getting more and more of this, so we need to establish a general memorial policy, and then underneath it put whether it's a tree, or a plant, or the animal shelter, or Oakdale, or.
Bench problem is on.
Bench, yes, thank you. The benches, I, I really think we need to go the direction of establishing a memorial policy first.
I heartily agree that there needs to be some coordination, some, some policy that oversees all of this type thing.
Because you don't know who to make the check out to.
And that, and that then becomes a question of who's, who's accountable for the money. And it's the money that, if they establish a fund for the animal control center, or animal care center, whatever you might want to call it, who is really responsible for accounting for the money? It's, it's private money coming in, in the past. They've just put it in a general fund. Any donations to the city have gone directly to the general, general fund, have basically been lost at that point. Because it's not accounted for separately and not used separately. If you're going to start looking at money purchases, you're going to have some sort of accounting involved in that fund, as, especially as we consolidate our accounts down to a manageable number.
Well, I know in our situation, and I'm being personal, but just doing it, but in our situation, the, the checks were made out to Oakdale Park bank account or Oakdale, Oakdale Park funds, because it's on their budget, the Dennis Ramsey Music Memorial. So I, I, I mean, I think it's part of the policy so that the money gets there, could be, you know, to the city of Glen Rose, designated animal care center in memory of, something, I mean, I'm just throwing out things.
There might have to be something there about, do you maintain it if the tree dies? Are we off to get, are we off to get to plant another tree, or? There's, there's a lot of things you gotta look at.
There are a lot of questions, but the, the overarching question that the Council Ramsey has raised is a memorial policy in general is something the city needs to have. Because it is, if someone just wanted to stick a sign up, and nobody noticed it for a while, you may have a memorial that you don't know about, and.
Like if it was something inappropriate out of.
It could very, it could possibly be, you know, so it's
Get us, yeah.
The, some of the cities, you know, had their policies, it was trees, or trees and benches, several of them had trees and benches, and that could be expanded to include memorials in that type thing, because that's kind of what we're touching on with the trees and benches anyway.
Councilman Bryant, any questions?
Yeah, if you're talking about, I fully agree with Councilman Ramsey, but if you're talking about a separate type of policy, you can actually separate the financial to the, I guess, the object like a tree or a bench, because they're actually paying for that on a separate, from the city. And that would just be an approval of placement. I do like the idea about the trees, but with the amount of 13, there's several things that we would have to discuss, but 13 is, talks about, you know, had it be removed, who would be responsible, where would it go? That would have to be something that would be discussed on an absolute certainty that this, this memorial is placed here, and one of it has to worry about future growth. And, you know, the only places I can think of are potentially a few spots, Oakdale, County Expansion, and then the Riverwalk, possibly some there. The rest is just, there's no telling where they would end up going. And then also, as the mayor says, financial responsibility, the city would hold no, no obligation to, to care or to finance. That, that would be, I don't know if we could create a system of policies for finance and.
It's not like the rest of the memorial, they had to be moved. They put it, they had good intentions, they put it there, they know, or something. They put it, they had good intentions, they put it there in order, something, didn't want it there.
Right.
They had to locate it.
I would not want to do that. Let me just back up a minute.
I'm not sure where the question really is right now because in order to develop the policy, we'll also develop locations for trees. You know, I would think that any tree that is, for example, if we needed, you know, five trees in Oakdale Park, you know, we could put that as far as these could be memorial trees, you wouldn't pay for the tree in Oakdale Park, we're going to maintain it for you, you know, because we need the tree.
We like something we're sponsoring.
Yes. We'd have the cost of the tree budget by somebody who wants to put a memorial there and have it back.
That's all the difference.
Not, not different. You know, and then you start saying, okay, we designate tree areas where we have a building program.
I mean, it is ours, if somebody comes to us and says, I want to do this.
We could have those places out there already figured out where we want trees to place them, that's part of the policy too.
Councilman Warren?
One thing I'd like to say, think about before we get ahead of hell in this is this is this going to create a new job? And we've got to have somebody go around and water the trees every morning, front them. That's my concern. Because you're getting the money for the tree, buying the tree up front, that's cheap compared to paying another employee to let it go around and take care of it.
Kind of that, if we, we put several trees in Oakdale just recently, and that was our decision to put them out there. And so we certainly took on the obligation of watering and taking care of them.
Kelly Harris, park director, Ms. Comey.
Just another comment on the tree thing. I know somebody was saying on the policy restricting the type of tree. However, if it is a memorial, typically they're going to pick out a tree that was that person's favorite tree. So you're kind of defeating the purpose there if you say, okay, you can do a memorial tree, but you can only do it in oak or, you know, something like that. So that's kind of defeating that. And as y'all just responded, you know...
What if they want to hack berry?
I mean, and the whole point is, you know, for two years, we will be taking care of that tree. We have to water the trees that we just planted, 15 of them, twice a week for at least two years before they take good root and actually grow. So there is maintenance, you know, on new trees now. I bought, you know, and another thing too is if you're going to put trees out there, we don't want little bitty sapling trees that can be run over by the riding lawnmower easily because I know in the past, I understand there have been some trees that were planted that were just bought from the Arbor Society that were small little things that got run over and mowed down. So that's why we, you know, prefer the larger trees. So that would be something else we could consider that it's a tree large enough to actually be recognized as a tree.
Councilman Warren?
I don't have a problem buying trees for Oakdale because that's a business and you want it to look attractive, I can see that. It's a different deal. But you look at, you don't have to plant another tree here at City Hall, where are you going to put one? And the Riverwalk, there are a lot of trees down at Riverwalk already.
Those are basically all the city on front, available part behind City Hall, there's trees there already.
Yeah, so that's, that's it.
The city here is, does not have that many choices of locations for trees, so it's almost, you know, you can put trees at the stand pipes, you know, but who's ever going to see it?
Are we looking at buying more trees for Oakdale or you feel like...
Well, that's one thing I was going to say, Mike had made a comment about having designated places where trees can be, you know, planted out at Oakdale. You know, we are still having to take down some trees. As a matter of fact, due to the severe drought, probably going to take down four this week. Some of them are extremely large trees, but due to the drought, the roots of them are shriveled up so much that with all this rain now, you can touch them and push them over. So for safety's sake, and one of them's in the swimming pool area, I don't want to go into the pool or going over a fence and breaking the fence. But in that case, then we have an area that does, when I, when we lose a tree, my plan is to replace a tree. You know, we've cut down trees or had, or lost them, we need to replace them. So then we would have, you know, slots for future areas to replace a tree that's gone down. So, but that would be something that, you know, okay, we got rid of this one, so we have a spot here for this one, you know, but it may not, I may not have enough spots, you know, for everything, you know, but that would be the best way. And, you know, I am trying to replace trees that were gone, you know, three or four years ago in order to give more shade out there and stuff. But it is a lot of pruning, trimming, maintaining the trees, checking to make sure for ones who aren't going to fall over on RVs and stuff.
Any comments from council? So I guess Kyle would be looking to you to work with Jim and Mike and get some, add some policy.
If that's the subcommittee you'd like to appoint, yes.
Well, I'm not saying that. It's done.
Well, I'd like to see us put on the agenda for, for next month or that we develop an overall memorial policy because we have had benches, we do have, you know...
We probably need to, since we've got the subdivision orders, get this top part right now, it might need to be something.
But you can't really establish a tree memorial until you have guidelines because the money's coming in the same way. So you can't really, you've got to work hand in hand in getting the basic guidelines for the memorial. It doesn't have to be at the June meeting, but you need to have an overall, in my personal opinion, overall memorial guideline of how the money's going to come in for each thing. And along with that would be certainly, you know, that it would be designated for a tree for Oakdale or designated for whatever tree for.
I disagree on anything we need to pursue. I don't think we need to pursue it.
Not even a memorial policy, not, not...
We do have a memorial policy, but we're getting into the trees and I think it's going to lead to additional cost to the city.
What I would like to see is do the memorial policy because giving to the animal shelter or giving to Oakdale, no matter how you...
Not as trees then, kind of a general, a general policy.
A general policy that says how it does.
If somebody wants to donate something.
As they want to buy a tree with that, you know, donate to Oakdale and designate it to a tree at Oakdale, then that, that money would go to the Oakdale Memorial Fund where a plaque would be put in memory of a member. Can we, can we manage those like that?
Exactly, I mean, that's what we're talking about, it's pretty much, Oakdale is about the one place where putting trees are.
So we can still go under the general memorial policy of, it would be the check made out to the, I'm just giving...
My comment, let me throw back, you know, I think Oakdale's easy to work on. Again, that's one of the, it's going to be a city expense, but it's also for the city benefit of Oakdale Park to put in trees.
I just want to make sure that we get a memorial policy because more and more people are going to want to do what like the animal shelter now.
Issue with the county is if people want to put a tree out of soccer fields, for example. The problem is there is no water out there. They have to be aware of that when they put it out there, that it's going to say...
That becomes the county's...
It's the county's problem, but that's, they do want it pretty expensive at all and that's fine. If somebody wants to put out a tree out there, they're okay with that, but realize the tree may not survive without water. Do you know what, how you think Oakdale Park is going to be an easy one?
As long as it's Oakdale Park, if, if, she can say, hey, I've got enough trees, we don't need any more trees. And then cut it off, even though there's a policy that you can buy one for Oakdale, well, no, you can't till we have one die.
Right, and there has need to be a criteria of the size of the tree as well, you know.
I've seen memorial picnic tables.
Yeah, there's plenty of memorial picnic tables or benches, you know, we can always use benches out there, you can have a name engraved on the bench, you know.
And you don't have to water it.
You don't have to water it, you don't have to turn it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That's, I'd like some discussion on that. Moving on to mayor, his council reports. We'll be having a meeting Friday, May 15 to 10:30, campus of votes, square and the officers. Moving on to item seven, staff reports. The public works manager, he is ill, Jim's ill, and he's going to be here now.
I do have some information, Jim and I have been working, especially with the engineers last week on a lot of the projects. The summer street project that we've been focusing on up on the ski and Jackson Streets and that area, we went over the street, went over the plans with engineer the other day, making some minor adjustments primarily to the drainage because we, Jim did not know that there was another street up there that fell off the hill where we could actually run drainage off. And if we can direct it that way with the curbs and gutters and such, so we can protect the, method of shirts even better than what we have it now. We spoke with the engineer about drainage problems at Oakdale Park. There's a couple of places on the northwest corner, near the area between Honeywood and the new bathhouse, that a lot of that area, you know, holds water and we're looking at trying to figure out a way to drain that away. That's not going to be an easy one because that's fairly good distance to you get to some kind of downhill slope. And there's a lot of water to get gathers there. So that's, that's something we're looking at. But we're also looking at the area behind Louis Castillo's home that actually flooded his home a couple of weeks ago when we had the four or five inch fast rain. Slower rain didn't do anything, any problem, but fast rain did and it did flood into the house. That is a problem that used to not be there, but it was generated a few years ago when the city went back in and filled in the ditches and paved those streets and driveways out there. And it is the first time it's gotten into the house. Well, in looking at it, you can see where some of the problems come from. And we'd have to consider, of course, anytime you move water, you've got to consider where it's going and who's going across. Of course, in our situation, we're sitting there looking at the river across the street. So it looks like it would be easy to do, but the wall along, from Mr. Castillo's house to the south along Bernard Street, the drainage is affecting that wall and it's washing out behind it. So we've got to do a few things and we're going to probably look at doing more than just a couple of things to make sure that water is not damaging our facilities out there. What we don't want to see is that wall fall off into the bar ditch. The wastewater treatment plant, you read about, I sent the mud notices out the other day where the problem was that we had inflow into the sewer plant. I'll report to you again after the rains we had yesterday, we had no inflow into the sewer plant. It was not, no real effect, which is outstanding. You know, that's, that's a sign of a very good system throughout. And the problem we had was just that one location where the line broke out just before the sewer plant entering for the manhole, going straight into the plant. Jim and the crew fixed that that afternoon by plugging it. We're going to go back in and make sure it's a more permanent plug. But we're also talking to the engineer about redirecting that line, moving that manhole because right now that manhole, believe it or not, is not touching the ground, it's up in the air. The concrete bottom of it is a couple of feet above the creek bottom below it because it all washed out under it. So we're going to have to do some work and so if we're going to do that, we're looking at relocating that manhole to a point that would be more secure. It's not going to, you know, wash out and cause us problems in the future. The water projects for the year, we have the water project, the biggest one, most difficult is going to be the one starting here in front of City Hall, going up Burness Street, turning on live oak. And that was where the water line broke out last week, last, I believe, Wednesday morning we came down and the water was broken out. That is a two-inch line, plastic, excuse me, cast iron, could be ducted line, but I think it's cast iron line, two-inch line. It has to be replaced anyway. We were hoping it didn't, wouldn't have any more leaks on it, didn't happen that way, blew out on us. And we're going to start that project, probably be able to go to bids on that in June. The engineering is in the process of being completed on that. Also in June, the water project over on Franklin Street, there's a, I believe it's an AC pipe that we're trying to need to replace in the process of replacing all the AC pipe that's in the ground, an AC pipe. In that one, we'll do a little bit of engineering because we're going to go, the street's in good shape, we're going to go and move that line behind the curb rather than in the street itself and bore under the street. So we're not really tearing up the street on that particular project. Again, hopefully go to bids on that in June. We did not get the grant, the community development block grant that we applied for, for Brian Street. A little disappointed that we didn't because we haven't had a project in a while and you get extra points for that, but it's still left us eight tenths of a point short where we did not get the funding. There were 32 projects, maybe 33 that'll be funded over the next two years and I think we're project number 38. So we're not going to get it this year or next year and because of that, we're not going to wait on this project. We're going to go ahead and we've thought, we've planned good ourselves anyway, so we're going to go ahead and get the engineering done and try to get that water line replaced with this fiscal year like we'd recently intended. And that one shouldn't be too often difficult because it's a pinworn plastic line going down the hill, we know where it is, and replacing it and making those reconnections shouldn't be that difficult, but that is why we're projects. I'm kind of moving into my report at the same time. The capital approval program, we've asked the engineers last month to start looking at the capital program, excuse me, plan update. And rather than bring you a plan for the approval that we are literally putting in this year's budget, most of the water sewer projects on that plan, I've asked them to have an update of that plan by October 1st so we can bring it to the council for the council's approval at that time. We've been working, the several of us have been working on the unemployment issue that is moving along right now. I think in our favor, it doesn't look that way after the first hearing, first part of the hearing, there had been a continuous and we've got more documentation and better documentation. I think we're going to be in fair shape, but you never know on unemployment. Jim was going to be doing the interviews for the wastewater treatment plan operator today and tomorrow, this evening and tomorrow morning. He is to sit through that, so those are being postponed. We did have some minor hail damage to the roof here at City Hall. That's the only one I've heard a report on and that was basically not some of the details, but just knowing that there's about six different shingles that are broken. We'll get a claim on that and the inspector with Texas Municipal League in Garyville and Bristol is doing the inspection of all of the properties today based on hailstorm on the 26th of April. And I'll point out one thing, it's kind of an interesting fact that I got from Texas Water about before today, that the drought of 2011 slash 2015 has been declared over. And the surprising thing on that is 30% of the state is still in an exceptional state of drought. We're only in severe, we're still in a severe, is what it's calling. And maybe with the next month, you know, that'll be updated. Most of the lakes in our part of the state are full. Brass's River is running massive amounts of water. And my understanding, of course, they're still letting water through Lake Ranberry Dam, so that's, at this point though, it was only a couple of inches from being completely full anyway. Lake Whitney, which is the last lake on the Brass's River, was several feet still down. And again, with the amount of water that's going to go down the Brass's River, I'd like to think that's filling up, but they may be releasing that water again also to fill up the low places and move that some of the water down to the coast. But there's not many lakes to store water, so I'm not really sure what all of their thinking is. But the, this time last year, right now, 30% of the state is in droughts, extreme droughts. Last month it was 31%, but this time last year it was 85%. So it's a massive change in the number of water the state's had with this April, May rains event.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Can you give us a day on the Nancy Drew, what you're...
There were no problems. I, now, I say that overall, there were problems, there were about five people that had water in their driveways after, whether or not it was in their house, I'm not real sure about. I spoke with Sue Oldham at the time, that was November, I keep saying November, excuse me, it's April 26th, right. To make sure that we had the names of who all had water problems based on that rain event. That was in case the state of Texas was able, if there was enough damages across the state, whether it was tornadoes or floods, that would be a potential for a federal disaster declaration. There did not appear to be based on that, that particular event. If the state and FEMA get together and extend that event from the 26th of April through even today... through even today, where you've lost the city of Van, substantial amount of damage in East Texas, if there's an application, if there's a disaster declaration, we can apply to be in Allen County and we can get some federal money for those individuals that had damage, whether it was that or for the winds even. And maybe get some money for the drainage project itself, based on the mitigation grant program. Now, the part of it that, dealing with the retention pond, or detention pond, excuse me. Last couple of weeks when we were looking at trying to get together about this, basically every day that we were going to try to get together, it was forecast rain. And so we really couldn't get on that property and look at it at that time. So that's something we still have. In fact, we're trying to schedule it again this week.
As far as we can with engineering at this point?
Yes. We are, it's, it's, it's the point of, you know, is the property available? We have already purchased part of it, the triangle, and the next step is how far we can go with purchasing property.
Sue Oliver, would you like to come to the panel and speak? Take your address, please.
That's Sue Oliver, six zero nine Nancy Drive. Just, and Kyle gave you the information, that's what I gave him. But since that time, I've talked to other neighbors and there were numerous ones. Dr. Terry, oh, Rocky, Rocky Terry, also had water. I'm not sure whether it came into the house or into one of his outbuildings. That came behind their house, which is the alleyway between Jefferson and their homes. And part of the problem is there is a alley there, designated alley. However, people have built into the alley because it's never been vacated. Now, whether, I'm no engineer, so whether that has any bearing on, but that problem in our area right now is becoming very heavy. During this last rain, there was, it was not full, the drainage ditch was not full. It was over the curbs running out of the drainage ditch or up to the curbs, it wasn't running over it. But Kyle gave you the correct information, but I just wanted to, I had talked to him since then or bothered, but there were numerous other homes that were affected. That area is becoming a big problem because of it. Now, a lot of the water that I had in my yard this time did not come from the drainage ditch. It was just the heavy rain and the ground was saturated. So I did have wind blow in through the garage door, but that isn't the city's fault either. But I just wanted you, the council, to be aware and Kyle, that there were more people that I did not tell Kyle about because I didn't know when I talked to him.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Sue.
Burlingmore, six hundred however, and I just wanted you to know that the water did get in at six oh six Nancy, my aunt and uncle. And they have done everything they know to do to divert that water. They put in underground drains and they put rock walls on the patio and it comes in behind their house like she said. And their house faces west. And they are up in their eighties and they sure would like to see something, but thank you.
Kyle, one time I thought you and Jim were talking about giving the engineer and saying, see if we come up with something to do and take that alley back over to prevent what Burling would talk about, the water coming in and back load homes?
We have, that, that's, that's something that Jim and I have been talking about the whole time and talking with the engineer about it and looking at it. It may not be as easy as Jim and I thought, but it's, to me, it's still a possibility because it is city bronc. The city can do what they want to with that, with that alley and use, as long as we can get the water to that. Where it comes down, that concrete flew at this time, you'd have to break out part of it and send some of it that direction to make sure, and that would relieve some of Nancy Drive. But that's still, you know, once we've determined exactly how much of a detention pond that we will be able to put in, then we'll know exactly how much. Just what we're doing that way, is it going to relieve the problem completely or do we still need to go back then and look at, you know, the Jefferson Street side also?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Nicole, we'll move on to the CVB Director Report.
I think I've, I've given you some reports that we've been looking at in the CVB as far as our statistics. As of today, we've got requests from forty-nine states, the only one that we're missing is Vermont. We'll get that one determined. And twenty-six countries. I'm really working hard on this multi-view marketing campaign that's really going to excuse upon saturate Texas. We, we've only reached three hundred thirteen cities in the state. There are twelve hundred and sixteen incorporated cities in the state of Texas, so we've only hit a fourth of the people here in, in Texas as far as the states are concerned. Heavy concentration of people that are visiting Glen Rose, of course, or Dallas, Houston, Austin and San Antonio. What multi-view allows us to do is to get a snapshot of what people's behavior is online. It's a lot more detailed information than Google Analytics will give me. And so for instance, I, I picked this one because it was, it was intriguing. On the sixth of May, Julie on, on, online and logged into Glen Rose CVB at five fourteen PM from Dallas, spent forty-seven minutes and fifty-three seconds on our website. He went through thirty-four page clicks, so he went through the attractions, he went through the arts, he went just to our, our homepage and he spent exactly seven, seven minutes and forty-seven seconds on the Paloxi River bed cabins. I have a list of every single thing that I can see that he has done as far as clicking on locations. I know it's kind of creepy, it kind of creeped me out when I first saw it. It was like, oh my gosh. I feel like Big Brother here, he's going nuts. And it, it gives you a lot of detailed information, but it's, it's interesting to see people's behaviors. And this campaign, I've got the, the marketing widget or the, what we call the, the digital advertising is located on Fox News, AccuWeather, the Huffington Post, Yahoo, CNN, the Weather Channel, CBS News, the Bleacher Report, USA Today and MSNBC. These heavy news channels are where people usually go to look and get their daily news and they'll see an advertising or they'll put a keyword in. And we put in some mechanisms, for instance, it's on types of cabin, dinosaurs, fossils, RV parks, camping. We put those keyword searches in there so that when this gentleman, for instance, went to Google and searched for camping and then went to another page, maybe on MSNBC, and then all of a sudden Glen Rose pops up. That's what we're trying to do. So we're able to look at a variety of different behaviors and I get reports seven days a week and I look at them seven days a week and we're able to get logistics from them and also some of the analytics that we've got. So I will keep working very diligently to really increase our, our market presence in the state. We're doing really well outside of it, but I really want to hit these other, you know, other nine hundred cities that are in the state that we haven't seen. I can even tell you from devices, fifty-one percent, fifty-two percent look at Glen Rose on a desktop, forty-eight percent look at Glen Rose from either their tablets or their cell phones. That's how they're looking at, at us. So it's, it's really good information to, to see and to study. The other thing is I've been looking at our hotel occupancy taxes. There, I haven't received all the reports yet from three main hotels, so it looks like we're severely down, but until I get those, those numbers from the hotels and I will submit a report to you as well. I did talk to my counterpart in Cranberry. He is also seeing that January was high, February down, March was down. And he's also concerned because of, we are weather dependent on our tourism. And so he is seeing a decrease, as we have seen a decrease from January and February, March, and we're hoping that, I know what's going to happen with April and May. We've had cancellations of our hot rod show that was supposed to happen this past weekend, which I think was a good idea that we did that. We're hoping for better weather in June, which is going to be scheduled for the twenty-seventh. And I'm still checking with the Charlie Daniels Band. I did submit a request to the Promise Organization. It has to go to their org to see if we can even have an event up there. The thing about the, the bands that, you know, they have alcohol requirements with the artists and I know that that's something that they are frowned upon in their organization. So I'm, I'm starting to run out of time because usually if I can't snag them now, I'm not going to be able to. So, but that's pretty much what's been going well with the CVB, lots of visitors coming in, but just really trying to get more marketing opportunities out there to get our name out there to people and also increase our market share in Texas. Any questions?
That's a cute character of me. That's not, thank you. Pink on us, thank you, Ray.
All right, no questions, we'll move on to the Oakdale Park Supervisor Report.
Wow.
There's a story with that.
Thank you, Ray. That's my all, yes it is, and I've done that and act on stage.
Oh, okay. All right.
I take that as a compliment, Ray.
Oakdale's taken in there. We had the ninetieth birthday celebration on May second. Our concessions went really good. I actually had great dulcimer group participation. I had four or five bands call me, just volunteer to come out and play out there, if there were dulcimer bands. We had the high school jazz band out there, they did a great job. The community choir can dressed up, they did a great job. And we had Free River Shine, our local band, like Calway and Evening, so we had a great lineup. So that went well. We had the thirty-fourth annual Dulcimer Festival this past weekend and since we are weather related, we did have quite a few cancellations, but the park was still a majority of the way full. And I have had more comment cards and compliments as we, I was around the park and talking to everybody on what a great job the city has done in improving the park and making it look great. They've seen a lot, noticed a lot of difference just from last year to this year. The friendliness of the staff, the helpfulness of the staff, the, so it was very, very successful. And matter of fact, it even brought us even more customers who would normally just come once a year, now they're wanting to come again, you know, during the year and spend a week out here, you know, just as a tourist. Doesn't even have to be, you know, dulcimer music, they enjoyed the park so much and the personnel that's out there, that they just want to keep coming back and they're home, their children, they bring their grandchildren out here. So that has been a great, a lot of positive comments. This weekend is the third weekend Bluegrass Jams. They will be having a yard sale this weekend, starting at seven AM Friday morning through Sunday, Saturday at noon. What it is, is people are donating stuff for the yard sale and all the money goes to the Paloxi River Bluegrass Association to continue having their third weekend concerts that they pay for, you know, to pay for their bands and stuff. So if anybody's in the yard sale, be in the pavilion at Oakdale Park, or if you have anything you would like to donate to them, to help the Paloxi River Bluegrass Association get it sold and bring it out to Oakdale. Swimming pool was open on Saturday, a little chilly for me, but we had people out there, we had it open from ten to five. I would have had it open later, but all my lifeguards are in school and all, every single one of them went to prom. So had to give them time to get ready. And then I have a new schedule out for our Oakdale Park Summer Concert Series, Saturday Night Concert Series. It's a free concert every Saturday night, but the lineup filled throughout the whole summer now. And some good news today is I just got the Randy Elmore fiddle camp is going to be moving over to Oakdale this year and from now on. So that's a, a week in July, during the week that we don't normally have anybody out there. So I think that's a great thing. They decided to move it, something because they've been having, they've been growing so much, they were having to send people over to Oakdale and they didn't want to move, you know, they were getting tired of going back and forth, so he just decided we work that deal and he will, the whole camp will start being out there during the week. So it's perfect because, you know, my weekends are awful, I don't have anything open on the weekends, but during the weekdays, I just fill a whole week, you know, cabins and spaces. So that, that was a kudos for Randy and how much Oakdale is growing and, and people are ready to come out there and put out their stuff. That's all I have.
I have to ask, because people have been asking me, what's the, does the guy have little ponies?
Oh. I don't think he'll be back after this last weekend. He got stranded in our new Oakdale lake over there. He's been coming out during some of my festivals to create another activity, keep them off over the other side. We get a percentage of his proceeds, however, he wasn't very busy this weekend and I know the Sheriff's Department had to visit him early Sunday morning because of the flood that came and he still had his little ponies in the pen up front where the lake created. So the littlest ones were trying to breathe. So they had to get up there and then I, I tried to get him out and had, one of my lifeguards tried to pull his trailer out with his four by four and he got stuck and Raymond Bump came out to try to pull him out with his four by four and he got stuck and somebody else came to pull Raymond out and then call, to call it out. And so somebody brought a tractor out there, just picked the thing up and moved it over. So anyway, but that's where I'm from. I mean, it, it was kind of an arcade and kids want to go out there and ride the pony rides and see the ponies, but.
I've got a question for you. Do you have an update on the income of Oakdale?
Yes, sir.
We get to your revenue, but the expenses are zero.
Well, I, I haven't typically ever put expenses on here. I can, I mean, when I first came here, I was ever given a guideline of what all y'all would like to see, if you would like me to start putting expenses on here, I can do that as well.
Well, you know, I get a lot of people asking me how, how is Oakdale doing financially? And I say, well, really I don't know because I don't see that. And I've wondered on this update, I don't know what the rest of council people said or not, but our last month, we're running fifty thousand revenue.
Right.
But I know looking at the checks, I know we're paying out a lot of labor right now for work campers and all that and I just wondered if the, the labor that they have at the permanent employee down there plus the work camper, plus I have, I don't have a clue what the utilities run us down there.
Well, I've just got a new copy of the latest, my budget from October for here with the expenses and stuff. And right now I'm right in line with where we're supposed to be at this time of year. So I'm not, I'm actually under a little bit.
I'd just like to see.
What my expenses are, so if you would like for me to start.
Month to month, when you're showing us what it is for April woods, it'd be nice to see what, what was the, what was the.
Now, I won't be able to provide what last year's expenses were for that month because I'll never get that and the expenses, yeah.
Yeah, just like see, you'll start going forward, so you have an idea of how we're doing.
Well, I will say we are over, even though last month was a bad month, March, due to the weather and this month we're doing really good, but we're still over what we were last year in our expenses. So we're continuing to increase our revenues here. So I will add the expenses as well.
Okay. Kyle, have any thing to add to your report? Okay, all right, moving on to the code enforcement report. Anything to add, Ray?
Cheerflies, sort of fountain candy ice cream and gifts is open and the shops at Cheerful Village is now open. They had their grand opening last week. And statistically, ninety-two inspections were conducted last month, that's a lot of inspections. Thirty-two per mission.
Stretch your step up. Stretch your step.
Who's your picture at?
Yeah, stretch your step up. Square.
Kyle doesn't have any eyes or, he doesn't have, he just has a blank face.
I'll have to get, come up with it.
All right, moving on, code, or code, okay, that is code. Yes, sir, okay. All right, moving on to executive session. Cities reserves the right to meet in a closed session on any of the following items. That item will be pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five five one oh seven one, consultation with attorney regarding litigation. We will not be doing item number two, deliberations about real property of the Nancy Drive Bridge project since the county. Information is not available. We need, we need number one.